Good morning, everyone. It being nine o'clock, I am going to call to order the County of Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. We will begin this morning with the flag salute led by County Executive David Bosch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. All right, we are now going to move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote, although anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and any item may be moved for the discussion. Is there anyone who would like to move any items here on the board? Anyone in the public want to move anything off consent? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Duran, this is a roll call.
Duran, Weigant, Holmes, Bueller, Montgomery.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, we will now move to public comment. This is the time at which anyone may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, public comment will be taken up again at the end of the regular session. Please also understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comments on any item not on today's agenda? Please identify yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morris. I'm a unit chief for the Nevada Yuba Plaster Unit of Cal Fire, Plaster County Fire Chief, and today I'm here in my capacity as Plaster County Fire Warden to provide some comment on the recent fire siege in Northern California, and I thank you for the opportunity. The 49er fire started on September 11th in 1988 and was the most destructive fire in the history of the Nevada Yuba Plaster Unit, ultimately destroying 148 structures and consuming 33,000 acres. That is until the late night hours of October 8th, 2017. On October 8th, 2017, four of the 20 most deadly fires in California history would start within hours of each other in four counties, while 11 more were growing into major fires simultaneously. At 9:45, the Cherokee Fire started in the Butte Unit outside of Orville. The Nevada Yuba Plaster Unit sent an immediate need strike team north, which is five of our 21 frontline engines. Simultaneously, the Tubbs and the Atlas Fires were starting in Napa County. Locally, significant fire activity started at 10:52 with a fire in North San Juan which we were able to pick up. At 11:04, the Cascade Fire started in Yuba County. At 11:08, a fire was reported in Wheatland, and we sent a full response. At 11:33, a fire was reported in Smartsville, ended up being a false alarm. A lot of resources are moving at this time. At 11:34, the Lobo Fire started in the Rough and Ruddy area of Nevada County, and 11:37, the McCourtney Fire started outside of Grass Valley. These fires were driven by high northeast winds and extremely low, single-digit relative humidity. The Cascade Fire had sustained winds of 55 to 65 miles per hour with gusts to 73. That's the wind speed equivalent to an EF1 tornado. This combination of low relative humidity and extreme wind speed propelled the Cascade Fire at a high rate of spread. The initial push of the fire covered approximately two miles and a half an hour. Local and regional firefighting resources were committed on multiple fires throughout the region, leaving these fires with limited firefighting resources. The resources we had gave everything they had and were focused on rescue and structured defense operations well into the morning of October 9th. Evacuations were being coordinated with Yuba County Sheriff's Office with a massive law enforcement mutual aid response to assist. The Cascade Fire destroyed 274 structures, that's 143 residences and 131 outbuildings, and was contained at 16,000 acres after combining with the La Porte Fire in Bangor. Four people lost their lives in the Cascade Fire. The Lobo Fire had established itself in the Deer Creek Drainage within the footprint of the 49er Fire and was spotting a quarter mile ahead of the fire towards Lake Wildwood. We worked closely with the Nevada County Sheriff's Office in coordination with a significant law enforcement mutual aid response to evacuate Lake Wildwood. That decision led to the evacuation of approximately 8,000 residents. Due to the alignment of the drainage, limited firefighting resources, fire history, and the time needed to evacuate took about six hours to get people in and out of there. The Lobo Fire ended up destroying 49 structures. That was 25 residences and 24 outbuildings. The fire was contained at 821 acres. The McCourtney Fire started outside the Nevada County Fairgrounds, quickly destroying homes in its path. The fire was the smallest of the complex but had significant potential to cause more damage. The Courtney Fire destroyed 15 structures, seven homes and eight outbuildings, and was contained at 76 acres. At 1:00 in the morning on October 9th, I requested an incident management team to assist with the three incidents. It was clear that we were beyond our local capacity. A La Porte Fire was starting in the Bangor area of Butte County. At the time, the decision was made with the Butte Unit to include the La Porte Fire into a fire complex so that we could share resources locally and move them around based on priorities with the incidents. Unit transitioned with that team at 5:00 on October 9th, 5:00 PM rather. Over the next few days, our ability to keep up with information flow and marshal additional resources improved. The first couple of days, we had about 600 firefighters. We eventually bumped that up. Over time, marshaling resources from the federal government, from out of state, from local, Southern California, there were folks coming over from Australia to help, and so we were able to get ahead of that. And at the height of the incident, we had about 1,800 firefighters on. The firefighting effort, while Cal Fire's jurisdictional responsibility, was made possible by mutual aid from local fire agencies, and I want to express my sincere appreciation for that response. At the height of the incident, there were three evacuation centers set up in three counties. This is just us locally. Large animal rescue activities and multiple community meetings. There were people dropping by incident base to offer their help to the fire victims and to offer their support. This was a very emotional time for the community, the emergency responders, and community volunteers. Emergency response was naturally giving way to recovery effort, and I'm also very impressed by the team of professionals that both Nevada and Yuba County had organized to help get the communities back on their feet. We held community meetings in Nevada and Yuba Counties, including informal briefings daily at the evacuation centers. Meetings were emotional and rightfully so, but were instructive on how to get people in touch with the resources they'll need to begin recovery. So why this briefing to Plaster County? Many of the events we experienced in the last few weeks were extraordinary, and the lessons that we learned should be captured and disseminated, and best practices should be implemented. An event of the magnitude of the Cascade or the Tubbs Fires, which was in Santa Rosa, is probable in Plaster County, and our preparedness as a county is critical. I've been in contact with your OES Director, Mr. Mackel Downey, throughout the siege, relaying some of the challenges and the opportunities that I identified, and the process to ensure that Plaster County is as prepared as possible for a similar event. Now, if you're watching or you're listening and you've been affected by the fires, I'd ask that you go to wildfirerecovery.org for a list of resources to help in the recovery process. If you're wondering how to get your family or your home prepared for wildfire or another such event, you can go to readyforwildfire.org, and it'll talk to you about preparing yourself for evacuations. Thank you for your time and attention.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chief. And just as a brief note, I did ask the Chief to come here today under public comment because I am very concerned that the kinds of fires that Napa and Sonoma saw, which were very unusual, you know, we think of fires as being in the wildlands, could very easily happen here in Placer County, given our mix of urban and wildlands and agriculture. And so, just want to remind folks that October is our most high-fire danger month in California. We're looking at a week to 10 days of hot weather in front of us with some significant wind events, so please, please, everyone be very mindful of all your activities. If you see smoke, call it in. We would rather have a false alarm than have something come up that doesn't get reported and becomes a real tragedy. So, thank you very much, Chief. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on any item not on today's agenda? Please come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Dottei, Deputy Director with Engineering and Surveying. I want to let your board and constituents know of a process improvement we've recently started for review of civil site improvement plans. These are the horizontal plans for development, roads, grading, drainage sewer systems. We have a platform now where applicants can submit digitally for plan review, eliminates the need for them to come to our office, and also eliminates the need for the significance amounts of paper. And then, on the county perspective, when we have digital plans for review, we actually review those digitally on large screen monitors. We annotate our comments back onto the plans. You can almost think of it as an overlay, and then we ship back electronically the digital plans for the rework of the designer. We've had about nine projects now come in on this platform, so most of our stakeholders know about it. Those who don't can go to the county's website, Community Development Resource Agency, Engineering and Surveying, and there's a link there that can walk them through that process. And thanks for a few minutes of your time. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's great news, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Any other public comments at this time on any item not on today's agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone in Tahoe, so I am going to close public comment and move to Board Member and County Executive. Report any board member reports today? County Executive, anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, in that case, it being 9:11, we are going to move to our 9:05 item. This is a library item, a presentation regarding the 2017 Summer Reading Program, and I understand that Sophie Bruno will be pres... Oh, no! Mary George!
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Mary George, your Director of Library Services. It's my great pleasure to introduce Sophie Bruno, Senior Librarian and Rockland Library Manager, who will discuss with you the innovative changes that we made to the Summer Reading Program this year and their successes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome, Sophie.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members, my name is Sophie Bruno. I'm the Rockland Library Branch Manager. As Mary said, I'm here to talk to you about our Summer Reading Program. I'm honored to represent the Plaster County Library Services Department. I'm particularly pleased to speak on behalf of my team you see right here behind me. I know that fall is definitely upon us, but just for a few minutes, I wanted to take you back to have a little glimpse into what Plaster County librarians did leading up to and during the summer and what it meant for the residents who participated. So I know it might seem a little bit nitpicky, but first, I want to just draw your attention to the actual title of our program, Explore, Discover, Do: Summer at Your Library, because for so many years, our flagship program has been known as the Summer Reading Program. Truthfully, if you... After doing this for 10 years, you might hear that phrase roll off my tongue, but we public librarians place so much emphasis on summer reading because we know what studies show year after year that children who participate in reading during the summer months, who continue to improve their skill sets, start that much further ahead come the start of the school year. They're that much more prepared than their peers who do not continue reading and remaining engaged during the summer months. Creating a program that encourages children in this way is challenging. We face a lot of competition, as you might imagine, during the summer months, but we're always up for it. So, when we sat down in the fall of 2016 to plan our course of action, it became clear that a name change was the least of it. So our Director, Mary George, tasked us to reimagine the program as a way to revitalize it, so that's... This is kind of where we got going. So this was our crack team last fall. We know that we do phenomenal work every year, but we also knew that something was missing, not just for staff, but for also the families that we serve. So, how could we get back to the essence of our library mission, to enrich, to inform, to empower, and to entertain? And in so doing, reinvent summer programming to best reflect what our communities were telling us that they needed. So if we, as librarians, couldn't get excited about handing out some tchotchkes to inspire kids to read, then how could we expect anybody else to be excited about it? And what are we doing if we look like this poor child when we're trying to plan for fun? So, the realization, once it came down, boiled down to a few simple points. And first was that getting children to read during the summer is really only ever been a part of what we do as librarians. During the summer and indeed during the rest of the year, every day, we use our expertise and our training to create special experiences through programs and activities that encourage children to think critically, to develop social literacy skills, and to try something new. And so, when our committee started to flesh out what that meant for the summer, the second point that became clear was that we've already started to posit ourselves as a place where we can provide people with experiences, and that what our communities and our families are telling us that they value about their library visits has nothing to do with a prize earned, but rather the experience that they have there. And that was all we needed. So, couldn't we develop a program where the activities and the incentives were uniquely Placer County, that reflected just what we and our communities value? How to get there took some work, but that was probably the easiest decision that we ended up making, and we centered that discussion around our unique insights as Plaster County librarians. So that meant every reading list, every incentive, every program would reflect our staff's unique knowledge of our communities and the families that we serve. To start with, every single child that participated, that read at home, picked up an activity log, did some programs in the library, they got a book to take home with them. So that's about age zero to maybe about the sixth grade. All the choices were carefully selected titles based on the best and most popular in our branches over the summer, and feedback from our participants included things like, "Ooh," and "Really?" and "Can I take more than just one?" They really emphasized the impact that experience had on our young readers, because if you imagine that you're a six or seven-year-old and you're in the library, a building that's already filled with books that you can borrow for free, but this book that you get to take home forever, you think, "How did my librarian know that this is my favorite series?" or "That I love manga." We just do. We just do. And that's an experience that will stick with them. And likewise, our school-age readers who participated in more reading, tried some new things, did some more activities at the library, they earned a lawn sign that proclaimed, "I'm a champion, I am Placer County proud, I worked hard to earn this." And just like that book that they selected at the beginning of their summer at your library journey, this sign became a part of their story of their summer. And probably if you look around carefully your neighborhood, you'll still see some of these signs up. Our certain Director of Services, Library Services, still has this in her window. This cool dude here is my son, and our sign is still in our yard in Roseville. It's just as vibrant as it was those many months ago. But the centerpiece of our summer programming was something called the Golden Ticket. So children who completed an activity log earned a golden ticket that granted them access to any or all of six secret events across the county. These tickets brought a certain cachet. We did not advertise them to anyone beyond ticket holders, something we've never seen done anywhere else. You might imagine a certain nervous anticipation on the part of our team as we sort of anxiously awaited attendance stats for these programs that we haven't specifically been selling to anyone beyond our program finishers, but it ended up being a calculated risk that paid off. The response was overwhelming. Our librarians had designed programs and activities that offered children just simply a way to celebrate their summer achievements. I've been doing this for 10 years. Honestly, I've never seen such an enthusiastic response. At these programs, there were no prizes, there was usually nothing more offered than a token snack, but that didn't affect the excitement of these families. The prize ultimately was a rewarding experience at the library like they'd never had before, and that love of the library, that fun, is something that will affect them and their families for years to come. Okay, so I trust you all can look at these stats at your leisure, but I did want to bring your attention to the number there at the bottom, 13,738. That's more than the populations of Applegate, Colfax, Forest Hill, Kings Beach, Penrin, and Tahoe City combined. That's how many people participated this summer. I think it's a number we can all be proud of based on so many shifts that we made compared to years past. Okay, so while you take a look at some of our favorite moments over our county libraries this summer, I'd like to read to you an email that we received from a parent. "I just wanted to send a quick note regarding the summer library program and how fantastic it was. My seven-year-old son has autism and he likes to work for rewards and goals. This program naturally implemented a strategy analogous to others we've used to help him learn and grow. He's a beginning reader, and I use the Golden Ticket program to encourage him in a fun and rewarding manner. The activities required to earn points were fun and yet some were challenging. They innocuously taught people how to use library resources, as well as the extent of the content to be found in the library. And while my son did not participate in all activities, the final reward was achievable with consistent participation. Best yet, it reinforced the concept of good habits, working towards a greater goal a little bit every day. We went to two Golden Ticket events, and while my son was not as social with other children as I hoped, he did have fun and participate in several activities outside his comfort zone." And the email closes by saying, "Thank you. We look forward to participating in the events next summer." I so appreciate, given the opportunity, to speak with you all today. I just wanted to close by saying I think it's easier to often maintain the status quo, to submit numbers at the end of the day, and proclaim them good enough, and move on to the next best thing. It's harder still to tear something down and reinvent it and be able to call a success, but that's exactly what our county librarians were able to do this summer. So, thank you very much for your time. I know I speak for my entire team when I say that we look forward to seeing you all in our libraries over the coming year. So, thank you. I'm happy to ask for any questions if you have any.
Any questions from any member of the board? Sophie, I just want to say thank you, and I want to note that there was one book that was up on your slide.
Yeah.
I actually coincidentally reread this summer, which is James and the Giant Peach, one of my very favorites.
Classic.
I remember as a child reading about the seagulls coming and carrying the giant peach away and just being so entranced by that vision, and just wonderful work that you guys are doing. Thank you all so much, really. Keep up the great work.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move to our 9:10 timed item. This is going to be a fairly complex item, so I am going to be using a script, because there's a lot of moving pieces to this. So, I am going to call for the 9:10 Riola Vineyard Specific Plan item at 9:22. We are going to begin with the staff report presentation by Michelle Kingsbury. Michelle, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michelle Kingsbury from the County Executive Office. It always takes a village with all of these specific plan developments. In the audience, I want to also introduce kind of the rest of our team from the various divisions that are here. As Supervisor Montgomery mentioned, these are very technical items...
Got it.
...that are related to the implementation of the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. In addition to our right is Susan Goodwin from Goodwin Consulting Group, who's the county's special tax consultant, as well as Chris Lynch from Jones Hall, who's the county's bond counsel, that are here to answer any questions that you may have and help with the procedural items before you. In terms of a presentation format, I'll do a real quick overview of each of the items. Your board is very well familiar with Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. In addition, we do have the Development Group from Homes by Town that is here too to answer any questions that you have, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments, and staff is available to answer any questions that you may have. So the first action item before you is related to the Community Facilities District. As you're... Excuse me, I'm going to back up a little bit. For those in the audience, the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan is located in West Placer County, right abuts our Sack County border. It's 525 acres. It proposes the construction of approximately 933 residential units, 10 acres of commercial development, as well as a system of parks, trails, and open space network. Homes by Town owns six parcels within that specific planned development, approximately 325 acres, and they entered into a development agreement back in 2009, I believe, and that we amended back in 2015, which included also an update to the fiscal finance plan, as well as revised, amended, and restated development agreement. And a lot of these actions before you today are required pursuant to the development agreement and the conditions of approval that we have for the map. That's the final action for your consideration. So the first item before you is the next step in terms of the Community Facilities District formation. Back on September 5th, we took the first step with your board's action to approve a resolution of intention to establish the Community Facilities District, as well as a resolution of necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. This is the next step in terms of the action to ultimately...
Michelle, let me just interrupt for a second if I might. Do we have a PowerPoint presentation for this?
We did. I don't see it coming up.
Greg, Jeremy, do we have a PowerPoint presentation? There we go. Thank you. It's just going to help people understand the context. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was going.
I saw that. Thank you.
So for those in the audience, outlined in red is the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. The houses to the south is our Sack County border. I'll go through these real quick. This is the development map, or a planned area for the specific plan, which shows where the residential units and commercial, which are on both ends, are planned for, as well as highlighted in green, is our open space, trail, and park network. So back to the Community Facilities District. So as I mentioned, back on September 5th, the board took the first step in the action to form the Community Facilities District, which include both the services component, as well as the facilities tax, which supports bonds. The initial formation boundary is this initial highlighted to... Sure. All right. Never hand me a PowerPoint, I'll tell you that. I'll just keep going. So it's improvement area number one, which is the first phase of the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, which is coterminous with the Mariposa subdivision map. The rest of the area are shaded, is called our future annexation area. The initial boundaries of this map were approved back on September 5th and subsequently recorded pursuant to the resolutions in the Recorder's Office on September 13th. The board adopted the resolution of necessity to incur bonded indebtedness, as well as the resolution of intention to form the CFD. These next items, before you take it to the next level... Excuse me. The purpose of the formation is to have the ability to levy the special taxes and funds facilities and services required for the development in the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan before your number of resolutions, as well as ordinance for your consideration, which include both a public hearing process, a ballot, and election process that we'll walk through, which just perfect one step further. Once we introduce the ordinance subject to your approval, we'd bring back on November 14th the final action for the ordinance, which would ultimately, in December, perfect the levy of the special taxes. Given the development, how it's proceeding forward, we're looking at the first levy, I think in 2018, 2019, for this development. Won't go into too many of the details, because you've already seen this item, it certainly were available to answer any questions that you may have. The board will be asked also to deem it necessary to incur the bonded indebtedness that will finance the acquisition, construction, the cost for those certain public improvements and facilities within the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, things such as public streets, drainage, roads, things of that nature. And there's a number of other actions, as I mentioned before. The ordinance will be introduced, and we're hoping to bring that back on November 14th for final action, and then ultimately have it effective, as I mentioned, in December. The next action item that's in your package is County Service Area Number 28, establishing Zone of Benefit Number 224 for transit services. We do have Will Garner here, who is available to answer any technical questions that you have. This is required in our development agreement as well, and is a condition of approval for the map for Mariposa. The properties listed in this Zone of Benefit are the six parcels controlled by Homes by Town, that are approximately 315 acres. This Zone of Benefit will establish and support the implementation of our transit services in West Placer County, and for the residents in this area to gain access within their community and outside their community, including linking up to the regional transportation systems. The next item that you'll be considering is Zone of Benefit Number 225, which is for library services. This is a new Zone of Benefit, similar to the transit services. This will cover the six parcels that are controlled by Homes by Town, which is approximately 315 acres. There is currently no library in that area. We do have a library planned within the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area that will support the West Placer area and the new growth planned out there. So this Zone of Benefit and the charges associated with it will support that library and fund the operations and maintenance. I think the approximate budget is about 1.2 million?
1.4.
1.4, excuse me, for the library services for that proposed 15,000 square foot library facility. And again, this is required pursuant to their development agreement. The next item that you will consider is what we call the RVSP Fee Program. The actual nexus study is on file with the Clerk of the Board, for those that would like to read it. But the RVSP Fee Program is contemplated within the development agreement for Riola Vineyard. It essentially has two fee components, the first one being an infrastructure component, which is essentially an internal financing mechanism for the infrastructure. It's financing those facilities after fee credits and reimbursements are considered that gap or delta that's still remaining for these facilities, financing it across the specific plan area. The second component is what we call a supplemental fee, or supplemental capital facility fee, largely to fund Riola Vineyard's fair share component. largely to fund Riola Vineyard's fair share component of our regional transit center that is proposed in the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area that will serve this new growth area, as well as a supplemental fee for the sheriff's facility that's proposed in Placer Vineyards, it's the substation that, again, would support this larger new growth area. On top of the fees for this, we have a 3% administrative component. The county will be responsible for administering this fee program on behalf of this development, and that 3% will cover staff time costs related to processing payments, doing our annual reports, and any fee updates that we may bring forward. A Nexus study was prepared by Economic and Planning Systems to support this fee program, and it was peer reviewed by Goodwin Consulting in terms of being in compliance with AB 1600, the Mitigation Fee Act, as well. And as I mentioned, that Nexus study is on file for anybody that would like to read it. We'll be introducing an ordinance and waiving the oral reading on the fee program, which establishes Chapter 15.90 in our Placer County Code specifically for this fee program, as well as you'll be considering a resolution that would approve the Nexus study and the charges associated with it. Our next item that will be for your consideration is what we call a deferred fee agreement. This is really a stopgap. It contemplates two fees, first one being the RVSP fee program. With all of these steps that were taken, the fee program would not be effective until December, excuse me. In order to allow Riola Vineyards to continue proceeding forward and implementing their specific plan, the deferred fee agreement would allow them to continue to move forward. They would not get their certificates of occupancy for these residential units until such time as they paid these fees, but it'd allow us to continue to move forward until these fees are effective, and then they would pay those fees in effect at that time. The deferred fee agreement also covers our Placer County fire facility fee. We're currently updating our fire facility fee. We're looking to bring forward to your board either November or December the update to that fee, which would include an amendment to the service area where that fee is covered. That would include Riola Vineyard, as well as Placer Vineyard. It is a requirement of their development agreement as well to pay that fee. And again, this deferred fee agreement is just a stopgap until those fees become effective. Last but not least, it's the final action. We must get through all these actions in order for your board to consider approval of what we call the Mariposa subdivision, which is the first subdivision, small lot subdivision map within the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. It's the final map for your consideration. It'll establish 107 residential lots, as well as a lot of other items. And your board will be asked to consider authorizing -- excuse me. Authorizing a chair to sign the final map, as well as approve and authorize the signature of the subdivision improvement agreement, as well as record the map and the subdivision improvement agreement. Leslie Amspire, as well as Dan Toady are here from our Engineering Surveying Division. That could certainly answer more specific questions if you have them regarding the map. That is a very quick overview of all these action items that you will consider today. I would like to mention it does take a team. We are here, as well as the folks from Riola Vineyard. We recently, I believe back in September, issued the first 11 model home permits for this development. And I believe these are the first permits issued within a specific plan in unincorporated Placer County. This will be the first final subdivision map for small lot that you'll be considering today, as well as the establishment of the first combined services and facilities, CFD. It's a huge endeavor and a huge workload that staff has undertaken, along with our consultant and development partners, and a very collaborative effort. And it does provide a framework for the upcoming specific plans, such as Bigford Ranch, Placer Vineyards, that we're looking to model as well. So, with that, I will turn it over. We're available to answer any questions that you may have and proceed forward.
Thank you, Michelle. Very well laid out, very clear, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any board member? Okay. We are going to start on the Community Facilities District Public Hearing Proceedings. These are the public hearings in this Board of Supervisors proceedings for Community Facilities District Number 2017-1, Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. The hearings are to inquire into the formation of the district, an improvement area number one in the district, and a future annexation area for the district, the levy of special taxes in the district, an improvement area number one, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness and other debt for the district to finance the cost of the public facilities. Any interested person may protest orally, or may submit a written protest to the clerk during this public hearing. Interested persons may protest against the establishment of the Community Facilities District, the extent of the district, or the furnishing of specific types of public facilities within the district. Any protests pertaining to the regularity or sufficiency of the proceedings must be in writing and must clearly state the irregularities and defects to which objection is being made. Any written protest not personally presented by the author of that protest at the hearing must be filed with the clerk at or before the beginning of the hearing. All protests and any requests to withdraw a protest must be received prior to the end of the public hearing. Does anyone wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now. Okay, I see no one who wishes to file a written protest. The hearings are now officially opened. If anyone wishes to provide comments, has questions, or any oral protests on this matter, please step forward. After this, I will ask the board if any members have questions or comments, or need clarification from staff. When all comments have been received, the hearings will be closed. Is there anyone who wishes to make comment on this? Okay, I am going to close this public hearing. The hearings are closed. We may now consider and act on Items B1, 2, and 3 of the agenda. B1 is the resolution of formation of Community Facilities District Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. This will establish the district, improvement area number one, and the future annexation area. B2, resolution determining necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and other debt, Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. This will determine the need to issue bonds to finance the proposed public facilities. B3, resolution calling special landowner election for Community Facilities District. This will call for the property owner vote to approve the special tax, the proposed bonded indebtedness and other debt, and the appropriations limit for improvement area number one. Do any other -- do any board members have any questions or comments on Items B1 through three? Okay, I see none.
I do.
Sorry, go ahead, Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, just a couple of things. You know, this project was, when I first came on the board in 2011, this project was just kinda eking along. And there were a lot of both internal and external obstructions to the project getting done. But over the last several years, we've been able to assemble a team, and Michelle Kingsbury talked about that team, and how hard that team has worked on not only this particular project, but the Placer Vineyards project, Bigford Ranch, regional, and now Placer Ranch. So, despite, you know, what some people would call hoping that we fail, despite that, we've been very successful. And I'm very proud that this is the first in a long line of positive things that we can do development-wise in the county. And I want to thank all of you staff for your participation and making it happen, because this is a real big thing for the county. And there have been a lot of detractors here for us that want to throw stones at us, say we can't get out of our way, we do things too slow, yada, yada, yada. Well, this has proved positive that we're headed in the right direction. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Duran. Any other questions or comments from any member of the board? Okay. We now need to consider each of the following resolutions individually. I request a separate motion and a roll call vote on Items B1, 2, and 3. And as a reminder, B1 is the resolution of formation of Community Facilities District. B2 is the resolution determining necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and other debt. And B3 is a resolution calling for a special election, all within the Riola Vineyard Specific Jerry, can we take those all at once, or -- okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motions carry. Thank you very much. At this time, I ask the clerk of the board to open the ballots and announce the results of the election.
Wow.
Do we need our elections chief to come up and verify?
More difficult than the Oscars, yeah.
We got him back. He can certify it if we need him.
We received one ballot, and it is a for yes vote.
This says the clerk of the board then completes one copy of the canvas and statement of results of election.
We will do that after the meeting.
We will do that after the meeting. Excellent, okay. The results of the election being unanimously in favor of the levy of the special taxes. Thank you, Kirk. The establishment of the appropriations limit and the incurring of bonded indebtedness, we may now proceed with the final actions of the district. We now need to consider each of the following resolutions individually. I request a separate motion and a roll call vote on Items D1 and 2. And again, D1 is the resolution declaring results of a special election and directing recording of notice of special tax lien in the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. D2 is the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of special tax bonds and approving and authorizing related documents and actions, also in the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. We have a motion, Duran, a second. Wygant, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motions both carry. We now need to consider introduction of the ordinance levying special taxes, Item E, on the agenda. I request a separate motion and roll call vote on Item E, which is an ordinance levying special taxes within County of Placer Community Facilities District Number 2017-1, the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is this a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call.
Duran. Wygant.
Yeah.
Holmes.
Yuler.
Montgomery.
Yes, and my apologies. Items D1 and 2 were intended to be a roll call. It was a unanimous vote by voice. Okay. We now move to County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit Number 224 Transit Services, Agenda Items F and G. This is a public hearing in the Board of Supervisors proceeding on the formation of Zone of Benefit Number 224 in County Service Area 28 for Transit Services. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of this Zone of Benefit and the setting of an assessment on parcels within said zone to provide transit services to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan area. Any interested person may protest orally, or may submit a written protest to the clerk during the public hearing. Interested persons may protest against the establishment of this Zone of Benefit or the proposed charge. Any protests pertaining to the regularity or sufficiency of the proceedings must be in writing and must clearly state the irregularities and defects to which objection is made. Any written protest not personally presented by the author of that protest at the hearing must be filed with the clerk at or before the beginning of the hearing. All protests and any requests to withdraw a protest must be received prior to the end of the public hearing. Does anyone wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now. I see no one coming forward to file written protests. The hearings are now officially opened. If anyone wishes to provide comments, has questions, or any oral protests on Items F and G on the board's agenda, please step forward. After this, I will ask the board if any members have questions or comments, or need clarification from staff on Items F and G. When all comments have been received, the hearings will be closed. Any questions or comments? Board member questions or comments? All right, the hearing is closed. I will now ask board members if you have any questions or comments on F and G. Still seeing none. At this time, I ask the clerk of the board to open the ballots and announce the results of the election.
We received six ballots, all in favor.
Thank you. The results of the election being unanimously in favor of the formation of Zone of Benefit Number 224 in County Service Area 28, and setting an assessment charge of not more than $46.46 per parcel, we now need to consider the resolution of Item G, adopting a resolution establishing Zone of Benefit Number 224 within County Service Area 28, and establishing an assessment on parcels within said zone, Riola Vineyard, to provide transit services. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. We will now move to County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit Number 225, Library Services, Agenda Items H and I. This is a public hearing in the Board of Supervisors proceedings, formation of Zone of Benefit Number 225 in County Service Area 28 for Library Services. The hearings are to inquire into the formation of this Zone of Benefit and the setting of a charge per dwelling unit to provide library services to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan area. Any interested person may protest orally, or may submit a written protest to the clerk during the public hearing. Interested persons may protest against the establishment of this Zone of Benefit or the proposed charge. Any protests pertaining to the regularity or sufficiency of the proceedings must be in writing and must clearly state the irregularities and defects to which objection is made. Any written protest not personally presented by the author of that protest at the hearing must be filed with the clerk at or before the beginning of the hearing. All protests and any requests to withdraw a protest must be received prior to the end of the public hearing. Does anyone wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now. I see no one coming forward with a protest. The hearing is now officially opened. If anyone wishes to provide comments, has questions, or any oral protests on Items H and I on the agenda for this matter, please step forward. After this, I will ask the board if any members have comments or questions, or need clarification from staff on Item H and I. When all comments have been received, the hearings will be closed. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment or raise a question? Seeing none, board members? Seeing none. This hearing is closed. At this time, I ask the clerk of the board to open the ballots and announce the results
We received six ballots, all in favor.
Thank you very much. The results of the election being unanimously in favor of the formation of Zone of Benefit Number 225 in County Service Area 28, and setting the charge per dwelling at no more than $23.54 per residential lot, we may now proceed with the final action on Item I. We now need to consider the resolution in Item I. We're being asked to adopt a resolution establishing Zone of Benefit Number 225 within County Service Area 28, and establishing a charge on parcels within said zone, the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan area. Vineyard specific plan area. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Fee Program. This is a public hearing for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Fee Program. Do any of the board members have questions or comments on items J and K? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who has any questions or comments on items J or K? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We're going to be asked to take actions on items J and K on the agenda. J, introducing the ordinance to amend Placer County Code Chapter 15 to add Article 15.90 entitled the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Fee Program, waiving oral reading. K, we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving the NEXUS study and establishing the initial fee schedule for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Fee Program. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we are going to move to deferred fee agreement, Agenda item L. Just as a note, this item does not require a separate public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from any board member on this item? Okay. We're being asked to take action on item L on the agenda. We're being asked to approve and authorize the county executive officer or designee to enter into a deferred fee agreement with HBT of Riola Vineyards LLC. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, passes unanimously. Our last action today, final subdivision map, Mariposa Phase 1, Agenda items M, N, and O. Again, this item does not require a separate public hearing. Any board questions or comments? Seeing none, we're being asked to take action on items M, N, and O on the agenda. M, we're being asked to authorize the chair to sign the Mariposa at Riola Vineyard, Riola Vineyard specific plan Phase 1 final map. N, we're being asked to approve and authorize the chair to sign the subdivision improvement agreement. And O, we're being asked to approve the recordation of the final map and subdivision improvement We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good job everyone. I want to, yeah, very well done everyone. I really want to take the time to thank Karen for helping walk me through this process. I don't think I'm going to have any other under my tenure as chair of the board, but Jim, this will prove to be very useful to you next year. Thank you all so much for your help. Just wonderful work. Good job. Whew, okay. Wow, that was a mouthful. All right, we are now going to move to our 9:45 timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item relating to secondary dwelling unit housing zoning text amendments, and it is my understanding that this is a request to continue.
Correct. EJ Volody, Planning Services Division, asking to continue this to November 14th at 3:15.
Okay, the request is to continue the notice public hearing to November 14th at 3:15 PM. Please note that the agenda says 3:10 PM, but that will be 3:15 PM time certain.
Perfect.
All right, do we need to take any action on that Jerry?
No, it was at CDR, you mentioned it.
Oh, yes, and I'm sorry, and that will be at the CDRA building at 3091 County Center Drive in beautiful North Auburn.
It is.
I have a motion to continue and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, it not being quite time for our next timed item, we will move to our department items. Our first department item is a clerk recorder elections item. This is the Elections Warehouse Capital Improvement Project, and our fantastic clerk recorder Ryan Ronco here to present. Welcome Ryan.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair Montgomery, members of the board. As mentioned, I am Ryan Ronco, your clerk recorder registrar of voters. I'm here to ask you to approve in advance of recorders automation trust funds to the capital project fund in the amount of $2,277,968 for the Elections Warehouse Capital Improvement Project with reimbursement from the general fund capital reserves over three years effective fiscal year 2018-2019. I think you guys all remember back on August 15th of this year, your board directed staff to implement a five-year capital improvement plan. That plan included a $2.7 million project to rehabilitate an existing county building at 11411 F Avenue on the Placer County Government Center campus to relocate the current Elections Warehouse. The inter-fund loan being requested today combined with a $390,000 cash payment from that same trust fund brings the total financing plan to $2,667,968. The automation trust fund loan will be reimbursed directly by the general fund in payments of approximately $760,000 starting in fiscal year 2018-19. The trust fund has a sufficient balance to carry this loan and all anticipated expenditures normally paid from this trust fund during the three-year period. The automation trust fund cash payment is based on the estimated square footage of the clerk recorder functions that will be supported at the refurbished warehouse. That's around 15% of the total square footage. The general fund will fund the remaining 85% of the improvements which will support elections functions. The final general fund payment may be adjusted depending on the interest rate which will be determined by the county treasurer and finalized square footage of the recorder elections space usage. Staff will return to your board at a future meeting to report on that. With me today is a shockingly high number of people to help out in case there are any questions from your board. With that, do you have any questions I might be able to answer?
Any questions from any member of the board? Or comments? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from any member of the public or the shockingly high number of people who are here today? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please note that Supervisor Duran was out of the room. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's still not quite being 10 o'clock. We're going to move to Agenda item 6. This is a county executive item, the Placer Ranch Specific Plan Engineering Services Contract Amendment with McKay and Somp's Civil Engineers. Michelle, welcome back.
I was gonna say good afternoon, it felt like it. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll keep this one quick. This is the second contract amendment request for McKay and Somp's to provide, we backing up a little bit, the contract amendment amount is for $303,500, bringing the total contract amount to approximately $1.8 million and some change. We are proceeding forward in a very quick pace with both the Placer Ranch Specific Plan and those coordinating efforts as well as with the Sunset Area Plan update. I would like to say a few words with Crystal Jacobson, my partner in the Community Development Resource Center, and we're making a good team, and we are proceeding forward very fast. As part of that is warrants this contract amendment, there's a significant amount of coordination efforts, not only between our two individual consultant teams, we are also coordinating with City of Roseville as the Placer Ranch Specific Plan shares a three-mile order with them, as well as working with the SEC State folks through their due diligence process and the CSU team there as well. There's a lot of coordination efforts going on there. We are meeting monthly with them, going through questions and answers. They are very engaged in this process, and we're very happy with the results and as we're continuing to move forward. In addition, Crystal and I recently have gone to the City of Lincoln's Economic Development Council and done a brief presentation. We're shortly going to the Wantmore Board and doing another presentation. Part of this contract amendment too is for some additional traffic analysis with Fair and Peers, looking at the Foothills Boulevard interconnection, that Foothills Boulevard, and it connects up to Sunset and Placer Parkway and how that functions. It's a vertical corridor between the City of Roseville and Placer County, so some of this work, some of the contract amendment amount pertains to that analysis, as well as providing some additional funds to Fair and Peers to work with, Ascent Environmental, who's our environmental consultant, to help condense an over 300-page draft traffic analysis to a more succinct section in the traffic, in the overall environmental document, so there's some additional funds there. On Friday, I did send out an email to our neighboring jurisdictions just letting them know this contract is proceeding forward and trying to answer any questions that they have. Pertaining to the traffic analysis, we have met with City of Roseville staff, City of Lincoln staff, as well as City of Rockland staff with Fair and Peers and provided the results of that draft traffic analysis. We're working on a disclosure agreement with the City of Lincoln and the City of Rockland so that we can provide that traffic study. It is quite robust, it's over 300 pages, and encompasses both Placer Ranch and Sunset to work with them in terms of the mitigation strategies, et cetera. So I'm hoping to get those documents out to them today. And so we're proceeding forward with that. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, but you will probably be seeing Crystal and I a few more times, I'm sure, as we continue forward in this process. Our admin draft environmental document is due beginning of December. We're looking at the actual draft environmental document out for public review, targeting March, and starting the hearings and deliberations between August and September of 2018. Concurrent to that process, we will be negotiating a development agreement and working with the CSU system and answering their questions as they're working through their land dedication process with the property owner.
Excellent, thank you Michelle. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, Michelle, again, the same comments that I had regards to Riola Vineyards and the rest of those projects apply here. You know, this particular project has been drifting between two jurisdictions for the last 10-plus years, and I'm very thankful that we, again, have a great team that is putting together the timelines. I know that you have a lot on your plate.
I'm tired.
I know that you're tired. Unfortunately, we've even had some dissension with our own board as to this particular project, but the fact of the matter is it's here and we're getting it done, and you have a big role in that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any member of the public wish to comment or question on this item? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? You have a motion, Duran, second Wiegand. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm gonna finish with our department items, and then we will move to our 10 o'clock timed item. So we're gonna move now to Agenda item 7, Health and Human Services, State Hospital Beds, Approval of an Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with Multiple Providers. Amy Ellis presenting, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and person and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis with the Adult System of Care. So this morning, we're bringing forward the amendment with the California Department of State Hospitals and Cal Mesa and participating counties for the purchase of state hospital beds. So we're, the action requested is to approve this amendment which extends the term from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2019, and authorize payments made to date and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the amendment and subsequent amendments with risk management and county council concurrence. So this board approved Placer County to participate with Cal Mesa in the purchase of state hospital beds on January 5th, 2016. This MOU extends the benefits obtained for three additional years. The MOU benefits Placer County through clear admission and discharge procedures, a stable cost for each placement, and only paying for the utilized beds. The current annual cost of a DSH treatment bed for Placer County with one person placed is $228,490 annually. Reimbursement to DSH occurs through an offset of the 1991 Mental Health Realignment Fund sent to Placer County. The amount of $456,980 is an estimated annual amount that includes usage of two beds for fiscal years 2017, 2018, and fiscal year 1819, and is fully funded with state dollars. This amount was budgeted appropriately and will be included in future budget requests. I would be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of this MOU amendment.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Any questions or comments from any member of the public? Seeing none, pleasure of the board. We have a motion, Holmes, a second Duran. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, Amy. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're now going to move to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a probation item. We are being given a status update on the PREP program, otherwise known more formally as the Placer Reentry Program. And we have Marshall Hopper presenting with a, what was that, exceeding number of staff? Whatever it was. Anyway, welcome. You brought your team.
So first off, good morning everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Madam Chair, board members. Again, thank you for your support and commitment to our programs and services that we run here in the county. I am your Chief Probation Officer, Marshall Hopper, and I'm here today with Mark Nigel, the Director of the Sacramento County Office of Education, and Chris Hudak, which is a Placer Reentry Program graduate. Together today, we're going to provide an overview of our program and a summary of our annual report, including some of our programs and services. We have completed a brochure of the annual report which is located in the back of the room for the public. We've also provided a copy of that report to our clerk of the board, and each board member has a courtesy copy provided to them as well. So now, before we get into the review of our program, I think it's important to give a brief overview of the history of how we got to where we are today. In January 2013, your board approved the Criminal Justice Master Plan. That plan identified some needs for reentry services here in Placer County to those individuals that were either on probation or needing services upon their release from custody or jail. So working with our stakeholders, criminal justice stakeholders, we began planning for our reentry program, today otherwise known as PREP. In February 2015, your board approved the contract award with the Sacramento County Office of Education to run services for our reentry program and PREP services. So over the last two years, the probation department has brought SCOWE staff into our organization, which is a unique concept, physically bringing them inside of our probation department so we can work together in a more effective manner, communicate more effectively, and have them become part of our reentry team. These programs that we developed were intended to provide individual case plans for probationers, individuals needing programs and services, and we really designed that program to work specifically for the needs of each client probationer in hope to reduce future crimes in our community and reduce victimization in our community. So recently, Sacramento County Office of Education has partnered with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, expanding services throughout Placer County. Now what that did for us is that developed a cost-sharing partnership between Placer County, Sacramento County Office of Education, and CDCR, and that truly allowed us to expand our resources to meet the needs of the community and maximize the county dollar. As a result, we ended up with a separate program now up and running in the City of Auburn at the Pearl Office, and in the near future, we already have plans in place and recruitment processes in place to hire an individual to work in the Tahoe office at our probation office. So therefore, here shortly, we will have a Roseville office, an Auburn office, and a Tahoe office, expanding to the entire county. So that's where we are today. So we wanted to bring your board up to speed on some of our data and concepts that we've gone over. We had a graduation recently, but I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Mark Nigel. He's gonna go over some of the nuts and bolts of the programs and the highlights. So, Mark?
All right, well, good morning, Madam Chair Montgomery, members of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the outcome data that we've had over the first couple of years and to share some program highlights. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Chief Hopper and the Placer County Probation Department and the board for partnering with SCOWE and allowing us to be your provider. As Chief mentioned, we have a very unique partnership, and we believe that clients are benefiting from that, and you'll hear from one a little bit later in this presentation. So the first thing that I'd like, the first highlight I'd like to talk about is just community service. You know, at PREP, we really believe in giving back, and as we move forward in the development of our community service projects, one, if you have some in your areas that you are looking for some opportunities for our clients to give back, we are all ears and would love to know what those projects and what that help could look like. Four programs that I'd like to highlight that we've done this year, we do community service almost every single day at the Roseville Fairgrounds. We've done some different cleanups of some homeless camps, a lot of landscaping, and just graffiti removal or whatever it might be. So our goal is to have a monthly give back, and that is an opportunity for our clients to give back to the community, and that definitely creates a win-win. Another highlight that I'd like to talk about is our partnership that we have with NCCT. That stands for Northern California Construction Training. This has been a wonderful opportunity. The program is part of the PREP program. It is located over at the Roseville Fairgrounds, and today, we have had 57 clients take full advantage of the program. advantage of the program and have become employed in union positions throughout the county and the Sacramento, greater Sacramento region as well. This is a starting wage of anywhere from $18 to $22 an hour with union benefits. It also provides vacation, retirement, and really sets somebody down the path to be successful and a contributing member of the community. What we found is that this program is not an easy program. You know, you start, it's four hours a day, it takes a commitment, but if the clients are interested in this, it is definitely a felon-friendly industry, and so you could check the box that you made a mistake in the past, but it does not prevent you from having a very positive future, and this has been a wonderful partnership with us, and it's located at the fairgrounds, and we look forward to having even more positive outcomes in the future. A little bit about our program structure, you know, we have a three-phase program. Getting through the PREP program is not necessarily an easy thing. It definitely takes a commitment. Day reporting works because clients have to report every single day, and that's what we're looking for. Our average client, we're looking to report four days a week. If they have some terms and conditions, we offer classes such as 52-week batterers, 52-week parenting, but that would be another reason for a client to come for a fifth day. But our program is broken down into three phases, starting with a referral from probation where they conduct a risk and needs assessment. If that risk shows that the client is a high-risk to reoffending in the community or medium-risk, then they're referred to the PREP Center. And our goal at the PREP Center is to create a one-stop shop. Our menu of services will continue to expand based on client need. One of our main goals is to address their criminogenic thinking and the needs that they have, to keep them in compliance with their terms and conditions of probation or parole, and to get them to move forward with their reentry plan. It usually takes about four and a half to five months for a client to complete the program, but there are reasons where a client can move forward before then, but that's kind of the average program, and as I mentioned, it does take quite a commitment. So with that, you know, over the first two years, you know, what this slide kind of shows is the total number of clients that have exited the program. So today, we've had 608 clients that started the program and went through the program. And some of that data, some clients were in the program for a few days and others were in for hundreds of days. With that, you know, our goal is to get clients to graduate, and we have 157 graduates. But that does not mean we've had about 350 or 400 failures. We also had 178 clients that on their way to the finish line to graduation, something positive came up, such as full-time employment, or maybe it was determined that they needed a different level of treatment, or a decision was just made to go to community college or whatever that might be. All of those are also called approved positive transitions, and what that means is that whoever sent us the referral, we report back to them that the client had this opportunity, let's say, to seek full-time employment. Here's the job, here's how they're progressing, what do you recommend that they do? And then that decision could be made to, okay, instead of going and completing the PREP program based on this person's circumstances, whether they're taking care of their family or whatever it might be, it's approved that they can transition into something else that's positive as well. And then unfortunately, we do have some people who, you know, are incomplete participants. They just haven't been successful yet, and that means they've been discharged unsuccessfully, but a lot of those 273 clients are back, re-enrolled into the program. A lot of the success that we've had, not only at the PREP Center but in the other programs that we run, a lot of clients' testimonies will be, well, the third time I was enrolled in the program, I finally was ready to make that change. So part of the change process, you know, is, you know, some clients just aren't ready for it yet, and so our goal is that those are not failures, those are people who just haven't completed yet, and we're going to continue to work with probation and our partners at parole to re-engage those clients and to get them to be successful. But even with 273 being incomplete, we still have over a 55% what we feel is a positive transition. That either led to a graduation or some type of positive transition upon exit. And then we have our data there on the bottom, which is Auburn. We opened up our Auburn Center at the end of February, so we did have a few people complete, and we're really looking forward to, you know, the results of that center as well. Looking at our graduates and our ATPs, which is the approved positive transition outcomes, what we find is the reason why clients are being successful is over half of them are employed, 92% of them have stable housing, 88% of them have healthcare coverage, 90% are stable living, which means they're not using anymore, and their monthly income has increased. And all of these things are resulting in, you know, the results that we're all looking for. You know, when we talk about, you know, is the program working? At the end of the day, what does the data show us? You know, where is our money being spent, and how is this a good use of funds? And what we found is that for our graduates and approved positive transition, the outcomes here are very, very positive, very favorable, and this is also in alignment with the other programs that we see. The clients that go through our program from start to finish and complete, the chief asked for us, well, how are they doing? So what we did was we took a snapshot in time. If you really looked at the recidivism, you know, recidivism studies, what those are usually taking a group of people who've left custody and letting, you know, watching them for three years, and after three years, looking at the data to see, did any of them reoffend? Did they return to custody? We haven't had three years of data, and it's kind of comparing apples to oranges, but what we did say is, how are our graduates doing? So we gave all the names to the chief, probation ran the numbers, and this is what we found for our graduates, that at the, a snapshot in time as of September in 2017, and remember, some of these graduates could have graduated a month ago, and others could be have graduated 15 months ago, but that 8% of them had a new conviction, which means that 92% of them did not. 12% have had a violation, and 19% were rearrested. We also said, well, how's it going for the approved positive transitions? The other people that might have left early before graduating, and we ran those numbers as well, and what we found that it was 12% convictions, 20% violation, and 31 rearrest, which is still very positive, but not as great as it is for our graduates. So working with probation and using this data to drive our decision-making is how do we get more people in the program, and how do we get more people to stick to the program all the way to completion? So some of the things that we will be adding on are evening classes. So when somebody gets a job, it doesn't have to be one or the other, then you could come to the PREP Center in the evening, opening the program in Auburn, and then also expanding to services up in Tahoe, so we can reach everybody in the county who needs the services. But we're very excited for the outcomes that we've had so far, and, you know, our goal is just to increase the amount of people that are progressing through the program. With that, oops, our PREP celebration, you know, every, although the data is extremely important, there's a story behind every single number, and you're going to hear from one person today, but just some other program highlights that we have to share is we have over 200 clients currently enrolled in the program. We partner with Placer School for Adults for our daily GED instruction. We partner with Placer County Health and Human Services and provide weekly drug and alcohol screening and programming at the center. We also provide services to the transient population. The last time we presented to the board, right after we presented, was a presentation on the transient population, and somebody on the board asked if we could put our menu of services up and said, wouldn't the transient population benefit from these same services? So then the chief, after that meeting, asked us to provide some services, and we were doing that at the Gathering Inn and the Welcome Center. And now that our programs are up and running in the Auburn and Roseville area, now those clients are welcome to attend the PREP Center as well, and we still do some workshops at those locations. One other highlight is Golden Sierra. We had a grant with Golden Sierra that also helped place 20 clients into full-time employment as well. So we're very excited with the work that we've done over the first year. We understand, especially sitting in your position, the reason to have the numbers in front of you, but it's also the personal stories that are very difficult to quantify when you put somebody's life back together and not only affect them from being reincarcerated and recidivism and preventing another victim, but also breaking that family cycle of recidivism as well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Speaking of real stories, real stories give life and meaning to our data and statistics. So we have our special guest today here, Chris Hudak. He's a former probationer, former PREP client, a graduate, and a Roseville resident, and he's here today to tell the board a little bit about his story and what this program has done for him. So I'll go ahead and invite him up to here. Chris?
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to speak this morning. As mentioned, I stand before you as pretty much as a quintessential changed man. It sounds cliche, but the bottom line is that I was a habitual offender. July 7th of 2015, I was incarcerated in Placer County Jail. On July 8th, I was the first client to attend the NCCT program partnership through the PREP program as well. I knew that I wanted to change my life, but I didn't really know how about doing that. I'd been in rehabs, I'd been in jail, obviously. I knew what I was doing wasn't working. The solutions that were put in front of me weren't working for me, and I knew I wanted to change it, but I didn't really have the evidence to do so until this program fell in my life. I took the opportunity to dedicate myself as best I could, and I had a big history of taking a couple steps forward and jumping right back to my old habits. Through the classes, through PREP, I've learned to dedicate myself, to do things that are a little bit harder than I would, and push myself a little harder than I would care to at the time. Those challenges in front of me, it, in getting that success, actually allowed me to feel that sense of pride and dedication. And before you knew it, as time went on, I started unbeknownst to me succeeding in these things, and I look back one day and all of a sudden, man, I finished probation. I finished the Prop 36 program. I completed the NCCT program. I completed PREP. And that wasn't any necessarily big feat to me, other than doing what I was told and dedicating myself. I now am fully employed, I've been at the same job for about a year and nine months, antelope iron, I work as a fabricator, basically doing ornamental ironwork, banisters, balconies, things like that. I get up, I'm up at 4:00 in the morning, every morning, I work till about 3:30 in the afternoon. It's hard work, doesn't pay very good. My boss is not the nicest man in the world, but I wouldn't change it for the world because it's hard work, it puts food on my table for my family. My wife Christina is here with our new nine-week-old son Gavin. For the monetary things, I drive a brand-new truck, I live in a four-bedroom house in Roseville, my relationship with my family's great. I'm not here because this is a requirement of anybody, it's not something my sponsor told me to do to work my steps. It's something I do because I like to do it. I like to try and give back. I like to be able to share my story, and I have so much information to, everything I've gone through in the past two years that I could bore you with it, but the bottom line is I wanted to tell you that the program really does work. The people that want to dedicate themselves and actually know that there's something they want to change in their life, but they don't know how to go about doing it, the PREP program's there to help guide them through. Problem-solving, discipline, just working out some inner demons with yourself that might not know that they're always there and that cause us to kind of slip back in old habits. I'm by far not a perfect man. I still have some character defects I need to work on and will throughout, and obviously a nine-week-old child will bring some of those out at the sleepless hours of the morning, but, you know, I know that I can do it in a positive way, and I don't have to go back to my old lifestyle. It doesn't, I don't throw the baby out with the bathwater when things get tough. You know, I've got a lot of responsibility these days, and being a role model, my son is paramount to everything else, and so if I continue on the road I've been continuing on, I don't see any problems ever getting in my way, but at the same time, I need to remain humble and know that those problems will always be there if I decide to take that wrong turn. So I have nothing but great things to say about this program, and I thank you very much for your time this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, just a couple of things, sir.
Chris?
Sorry. I've been a judge, I've been a prosecutor, I've been an Attorney General for Native Tribes. I've been in the criminal justice system for many different ways, and I've always learned and always continue to believe that an ounce of prevention is worth so much more than a pound of cure. And I think what you experienced and what you went through is being able to face those challenges that a lot of folks that may have more resources than you do never face. But you faced them, and you understand the value of accomplishing things for yourself as opposed to taking them, because they're much more savory to you and your family. So I commend you for what you do and continue to go down the line. My District Director, Christina Rivera, will give you a couple of cards for my office if there's anything you need in the future, anything, just sit down and chat, whatever, just let my office know.
Thank you. Good luck to you, sir. I do appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to mention, I was very impressed by your comments about, you know, looking toward the future and understanding, hoping for no challenges, but understanding that they will arise. One of the things that I like so much about the PREP program is that should those challenges come up and you have something to face, I know the PREP folks are always going to be there, ready to have the conversation with you and to help you through whatever stumbling blocks and impediments come forward. So congratulations on your success today. Congratulations on the baby to both of you, because you did all the hard work.
She did. Thank you.
But just, it's so delightful for us to be able to put a face to these programs.
I will, pardon me for saying, I will say this, that it feels like, almost like a friendship, but doesn't feel like a forced relationship or standing in front of a judge and attorney and saying it's something that you are supposed to say because that's what's going to keep you out of hot water. At the graduation and seeing, I mean, I met Mark, I think it was the second or third day in PREP, and I said, you know, I'm going to finish this program, and what do I do? I want to come back and speak for you guys. So looking back almost two years now and seeing that it's actually come to fruition, I really didn't know that it would happen at the time, and it has, and it's, I got the phone call from him, and it's, like I said, it's like almost catching up with old friends, and so that relationship means that I know I can talk to them, and I know I can relate to them if something was to get in my path, and it's that relationship I'll take with me for a long time.
That's great. Supervisor Holmes?
Chris, I was, actually Supervisor Montgomery and I were both at the graduation ceremony with my aide, Beverly Roberts, and you spoke very eloquently. You really surprised me, quite frankly, you got up and really spoke eloquently, but you set goals for yourself, met those goals, and moved on to the next one, and you're a shining example of how this program works. It was really refreshing to see all those, many of those fellows that I knew and women from the Gathering Inn, that were residents of the Gathering Inn, were there and got graduation certificates. So it's really refreshing to see those successes. So I want to thank Marshall Hopper and Mr. Mark for putting this program together. And the Sacramento County Office of Education, Dave Gordon, I was very fortunate to be able to sit next to him during the ceremony, and we shared a lot of different ideas and comments. So the best thing that happened to you is you got a job and a trade.
Absolutely.
And that's something that you'll carry with you for the rest of your life, so.
It's my passion. I absolutely love it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Chris, for being here today and sharing your story. You know, this discussion that we just had represents just one of the many individuals that have gone through our programs, and there are hundreds of other stories very similar to that. So again, thank you for being here today. That concludes our PREP presentation. At this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have, so I'll turn it back to the board for direction.
Supervisor Yeller?
Yeah, does your program have opportunities for young men like him to go back and talk to guys currently incarcerated and say, look, it's possible?
Certainly. We would welcome anyone to come back into our program and have discussions with either in custody or in our programs. And on the same note, we touched on it earlier, but any alumni who's having a hurdle can come back and see us as well. So he mentioned it a little bit, more of a partnership or a friendship, and that's where, truly where the progress gets made. So we would certainly welcome anyone to come back and speak with any individuals in your communities, different meetings, in jail, in custody, out of custody. We're here to do whatever we can do to promote positive change.
Yeah, I just, I have to believe that folks in our jail population must have days where they just feel like, you know, what's the point? What's my future? Do I have a future? And to hear a story like that, I think would be very motivational, very, provide some hope.
Certainly. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, and I just have to say this because it's the elephant in the room here. This program is on the rear end after someone has been through the system, and we are, as a board, are trying to do the exact same thing at the front end to prevent those from going into, you know, the system. And I just wish that people would be able to get their heads around that, because it's a lot more cost-effective on the front end than the rear end.
I will note on that, on that point, Supervisor, that we will take individuals who are not on probation, because, very much like juvenile interventions, you are providing services to prevent the future. If we have individuals in our communities that are finding themselves sort of going on the wrong path, and they want to make a change in their life, they can come to our PREP Center, and we can provide them with services and support. Obviously, we'll have priority given to the ones in custody, but if somebody really wants to change, we will make room, and we will provide every assistance we can for someone to change, because it's much better to prevent something from happening and that person becoming reliant upon our justice system to change their lives, fixing it first and before rather than after the fact.
That's the whole point.
Yeah.
Supervisor Wiegand?
Just thanks to all of you. Great, great moment, but Marshall, I want to particularly thank you. Over the 20-plus years, we've seen a tremendous evolution in our Department of Probation we've seen a tremendous evolution in our Department of Probation, um, and your attitude and Steve before you as it relates to the Plasmo model of HHS and work with those folks and having a different philosophy that I think we've been talking to has made a huge difference here. So thanks, but continue the good work.
Thank you. I will.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? And thanks to all of you, all three of you for, uh, showing up today and best of luck with everything in your future. Congratulations on the baby boy. All right. We are going to, um, go to closed session. Jerry, take us away.
Uh, the board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss the seven items of existing litigation on page four of the agenda and also to discuss, uh, four items of anticipated litigation. In addition, with the concurrence of the board and on a subject to a four-fifth vote, I'd like to add to the closed session another matter of existing litigation, Derek Connor versus County of Placer et al. It's a United States District Court case in the Eastern District, case number one, two thousand and seven, CV zero-one-eight. If the board will indulge me in adding that.
Do you need a motion for that, Jerry?
Yes, a motion and a four-fifth vote.
Uh, Supervisor Holmes has moved. Wegant seconded, it sounded like, or were you just muttering to yourself?
Second.
Duran, seconds. Aye. Oh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That was a five-oh. Thank you. All right. How long do you think this will take, Jerry?
Uh, at least a half hour.
Okay.[694.12]
Yes. The Board has returned from closed session from a conference with legal counsel in the matters of Clyde, Connor, Coleman, Bangert, Langley, Golden and the four matters of anticipated litigation. The Board heard a report from counsel and gave direction to counsel. In Thomas Melgar versus Ronald Scott Owens, the Board heard a report and authorized a defense and indemnity of the District Attorney and the Deputy District Attorney served as defendants in that case. In Merlyn Sphinx versus County of Plaster, the Board heard a report and authorized a defense of former Sheriff Ed Bonner in the event he serves and requests a defense in that case. That concludes this closed session report.
Thank you very much. Having completed all items on today's agenda, I will adjourn today's meeting in honor of Sheriff Deputies Danny Oliver and Michael Davis Jr. Our next meeting will be at 3:00 PM at the CDRA building at 3091 County Center Drive on November 14th.
And we're adjourning to that meeting. It begins at three o'clock.
And we're adjourning. Yes.